Next meeting, no meeting, next meeting to be announced. Lake Region, vote patient. No meeting, next meeting, May ninth. Delta Advisory, no meeting, next meeting to be announced. Policy, report on the March thirteenth meeting, next meeting is May eighth. And we did the following at Policy that you can see right here for action items. Consideration to approve the following policies is first read. School Board meetings, executive sessions, executive session procedure, agenda, public comment at board meetings.
Do you want to motion on this?
I do, please.
I move that we accept these policies that were just noted as first read.
There you go. Second?
Missy?
All those in favor?
Is there discussion?
Are you in discussion?
What's the discussion?
I don't know, you didn't ask.
Discussion.
I have a question.
There we go.
Did we at the meeting, I remember looking at that policy at the very end of the meeting. Did we go through the whole thing?
On which one?
The, I'm sorry, B E D H, public comment at board meetings.
No, we tabled that.
Okay, so then why are we, why are we voting on it as a first read?
Poll.
I retract my motion.
So the new motion is for B E V E C, V E C hyphen R, V E D B.
Right, okay, I thought I was losing my mind.
Thank you.
I don't remember.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we still have questions about that.
Okay.
Brad?
I looked at this calendar. And with the half days, the workshops.
The twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes.
That's coming up in action. Two votes down, we're coming. We're not on that yet.
So are we, how about the public comment?
That's removed, we're not voting on that. Withdrawn.
I'll wait a little bit.
Okay?
Yep.
Right, so all those, do we vote?
Yeah, we have Jolene and Missy now, just to recap for the.
So all those in favor except, we're tabling public comment at board meetings.
Correct.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. And then the second motion from Policy was consideration to remove the following policy. J L F dash E's suspected child abuse in the block form. Looking for a motion, a second?
So.
Bradley, Jolene.
All those in favor? It is removed.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
So I'll go quick, I know it's a bit. Just appointments for folks watching, Grace Sanborn, varsity softball coach. Alex DeVeau, varsity track coach. Steven Dembowski, varsity boys track coach. Mr. DeVeau is varsity girls track coach. Stephanie Wilson, custodian at our school system. And in terms of the spring learning plan, which we adopt every six months per our grant. Things are still going well at school, if you can believe it, we're one day away from Upro vacation and things have gone well. That's my report for the month.
Okay. So, because the next one is considerations will prove the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar. Need a motion and a second?
Bradley?
Second.
Jolene?
Did it go up yet?
Yes, it was emailed to everybody.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Brad, you have one.
Yes.
So I went over this thing briefly this afternoon before the meeting. And I counted up the actual days, time that students are here. And I got a hundred and fifty-nine days. But you can, you know, I'm not counting those workshop days, early dismissal, that's a half day. That's the actual student learning. This state allows us to call it a real day, but it doesn't happen. I'm just thinking that maybe we should, we really look at this. You know, I think the statement, what's the state mandate, hundred seventy-two, hundred thirty-five?
Hundred seventy-five.
Hundred seventy-five. I think it's time, you know, until our score is improved to an acceptable level, that we provide the education that these kids deserve. And, and, you know, this is, in my mind, this is unacceptable.
So I have, there's eleven early release days, so if we say those are half, that's five and a half off one sixty-nine point five.
Okay.
Your point's, I hear your point, I don't have one fifty-nine, so I'm happy to look at that.
Early release days and what about the four teacher workshop days, have those counted on?
It's not part of the one seventy-five, those are above and beyond.
Okay, I counted that in. It's one sixty-nine. I don't, I don't think we afford to give away five and a half days of education. It's, you know, the other thing is, is, you know, on top of that, we'll have probably some early release days because of storms. This year, we had the October shooting, they had two more days there, there's no education going on. This stuff all adds up, and you can't expect, you can't have these respectable, acceptable scores if you continue to do this. I'm sorry, I said, if we continue to do this.
No, the, so the board adopts the calendar, this is the one that I presented. I think our staff, our D L T, this is a similar calendar to what we've been running. So one, two, three, four, ten, actually, ten in the last day is going to be, it's almost the identical calendar, twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. I'm not saying that's good or bad, and I think it was similar to twenty-two, twenty-three. I think the staff would say, or some staff would say certainly, the value of their release days to get together with their teams, talk curriculum, try and improve the instruction, look at the data from the kids, that those half-days would benefit education. You're the board, if we want to take away some half-days, all the half-days, I think the rest of it complies and is in agreement with our voc center, I E, Freiburg, Lake Region, and us. We make calendars together, we're very similar calendars. I think Freiburg takes every Wednesday as an early release, so forty early, I'm not saying that's right or wrong. We have eleven, thinking it's the happy medium to try and give the staff some time to prepare and modify their instruction, balanced with hearing what you're saying, we want kids in the chairs and providing education. So this was the right balance for the team that presents to you, but it's certainly ultimately a school board's prerogative to make the calendar they see fit.
Maggie?
I agree with Bradley wholeheartedly, and I have for years, I remember counting them up a few years ago. And, oh, there are eleven days that we're not here, the kids aren't here, being taught. And I think, I understand they need to get together, and we used to get together, we did it after school. And it was counted towards our match.
Release days?
Release day, yes. It was count, you know, if we, I can remember the third grade teachers meeting, and, and that was counted after school. And that was counted towards your release day, match.
Yep.
Well, another point I'd like to make is, is, you know, if you hire somebody to work on your house as a carpenter, he doesn't come to, to the job site, he sits there chopping his saws and, and get all this material ready. He's done that at home. If you're having somebody do excavation work around your house, they don't come and unload the tractor at eight o'clock, expect to get paid at eight o'clock, and then go around and grease it and check everything. That's work than everybody, in every other industry or profession that they do on their own time, getting things ready. And I taught school for thirty-five years, and I don't remember having all of this. This is, you know, if our scores were, were top notch, I would, I would be happy as could be. We're gonna start looking somewhere else to do better with the education for these kids. You know, when you get sixty-seven percent, sixty-three percent of them are not making this standard in English, giving them extra time off, not in school, is not cutting the mustard as far as I'm concerned.
Danny?
I mean, I, I hear where you're coming from, but I do see value in the kids that are staying there until noon. I don't see this as a day that is just a free-for-all. These kids are getting an education, they are going to class. There is something that's happening. So, I mean, I don't see this as, you know, something, I don't see the data that's saying that because of these half-days, that these are impacting the scores for our kids. You know, maybe we could consider cutting one or two, but I don't, I don't think cutting all of them is really going to make a difference.
Vale?
I'll do it again.
Go ahead.
When I was teaching, and I'm sure Bradley probably ran into the same thing, it would come, okay, the, the half-day business, and grade level, we used to call them back then. And I'd say to the principal, what are we doing? Do whatever you want when you're on. I mean, and by the time you get to match, it seems to me you should have it pretty well concise of what's going to happen, how you're going to teach. If they're, if they're not in school, Danny, I don't understand what you mean. If they're not in school, they aren't learning, I mean, they aren't being taught.
But they're still in school.
No, they have to go home, they go home at noon time.
Yes, but they're still in school those days.
For half a day.
It's not half a day.
It's only two hours short.
Yeah.
Well, it's after lunch is served, that's the rule.
And, and I, and if, the reason I have my thing up, I'm probably cutting, but, and Carl might be able to answer, but don't they do a different type of schedule? You get everything in or something?
Yes, yeah, so they do, do schedules that periods are a little shorter.
It's not like it's a snow day where it's unplanned.
Yeah.
They've planned a schedule for them to get what they normally have in.
It's just a short day.
Stay all day. Well, I, I don't know, are we supposed to have these teachers to learn? But are we required to do that?
Missy, you have a bud?
Yeah, I don't, I agree that I don't think the, a half-day of school now is just a wasted free-for-all day. Like, I can vividly remember a half-day in school and they wheel in the TV cart, right? Everybody loved it when they wheeled in the TV cart. And that, I don't, it hasn't been my experience that that has happened, at least for my childhoods in school. I also was wondering how this calendar reflects any contracted work agreements also.
Sure, so our work agreement is the hundred and seventy-five days. I think the board does have discretion with the pink days, so currently there are eleven pink. I did a Freiburg count, I'm looking for Lake Region right now. Freiburg has thirty pink days. Again, not saying they're the end all be all to school, but we have eleven and they have thirty, and I'm looking up Lake Region as we speak. He said our calendar pretty much matches yours, I'll get that detail. So contractually, I think you're okay with however many pinks this board wants. If you want the eleven that we have, if you want fewer, that's fine, if you want more, that's fine. Whatever you'd like to do, I'll certainly comply. This calendar, day-wise, to Maggie's, all these days count, this complies with D O E. I don't think you could add more days, contractually, but you can horse with the pinks however you want.
Brad?
So then, let me ask this, come at this from a different angle, to, you know, reassure the board of the value of these pink days and the workshops and so forth in the afternoon, and it is, would we be invited to, to the workshops to see what's being presented, what's being given to the teachers?
Sure, I think visitors to our events are fine. I know some board requested to go to the career fair, I don't know if any did or didn't that day in the gym, but certainly, yeah.
I think it would be interesting, you know, I, I could be more reassured if I thought there was something valuable going on, because I can remember those workshops that Maggie was talking about as well. It wasn't, in my case, it was a different district, but it was, I had an administrator come up to me two days before the workshops, say, what do you think we ought to do on Friday? Okay, that was not a valuable experience.
I would say that our team puts more effort to it than your experiences have done.
Jim?
Yeah, I guess if we could just be reassured what's happening, I am kind of all for it. I know Friday afternoons can tend to be a little bit of a waste of time, kind of, for students anyway. And I know every teacher is different, but if we can see that they're producing something in workshops, and I believe in the state of the schools, they've mentioned several things that they've worked on, I believe, in the early release days. I think things have come a long way in the past twenty or thirty years, as far as what you're required to show that you're doing for trainings and what's available for trainings, and now with online capabilities, I think you can do a lot of trainings right here. So I have no doubt, I would like to know what is happening at workshops.
And I'm sure you could get the agendas to those workshop days.
Yeah, and I have no doubt, I know, I know some teachers, and I know we've discussed some of the things they've done during that time, so.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, the agendas are fine. Sue Day is diligent about working with the teams to create that.
I do know, I remember them discussing some of the things that they've done during the state of the school reviews too.
Lake Region, twenty-three, twenty-four, Lake Region has six such days. We have eleven, Freiburg has thirty.
Freiburg is private.
This is seventy-two, K through eight, this is their public component.
And those count towards workshop hours, correct?
Double dipping is all Sue's world, good question. Do they get to do the P D component? Good question.
My, my question, I guess, would be if we take those away, then the teachers now would have to make up those hours as a workshop somewhere else on the calendar.
I would say, definitely think that the teachers would be concerned.
Those add up too.
They didn't spend time with their colleagues to develop and work at their craft and instruction, and could they do it after school? Certainly, but I think they find, or certainly some of them find that time valuable and work hard to make it productive.
Agreed.
I think keeping it during the school day as part of their employment gives us better control over, like, the quality of the training they're receiving too.
But they're not.
Go ahead, Maggie.
They're not, you see them training, it's like, we're, we're the third grade teachers, and we, we meet. And we discuss, like, different ways that we present math, or whatever we decide, as the third grade teachers. It's not a workshop where somebody comes in, that's a totally different thing than grade days, half-days. A workshop is an all-day thing, usually, and you have a speaker come in. We're talking about when the kids are dismissed at eleven-thirty.
Amy, and then Brad.
So, but we don't have workshop anymore.
Yes, we do.
Where they have no school?
We have.
Kids don't come, the teachers do.
Have a couple that are getting in.
The first, the first two days, the second day.
First two days of school.
This board, a few years back, moved to pre-K, K, four and nine, so all the transition grade levels, so those kids get actually a hundred and seventy-five and a half days of school, they get a little bit more than the state requirement. So we bring in kids for the half-day, that, all the transitioning and the new school kids. Freiburg Fair Friday, which has probably been going on for a million years, before Carl Landry for sure. And the voucher day, that is a negotiated day currently in the teacher's contract, which is the Friday before April break, is another workshop day where they put in work outside of, and documented to their building leader.
But I thought we did these half-days so we would have less full days and we would get credits, no?
The half-days are for teachers, instructional staff to get together to work on instruction, curriculum, student progress, et cetera. And among other things, there may be a training of this or that nature, or videos, or Sue would be far better than me. Sue definitely does the bulk of the work, will turn with our teachers to make sure that they're progressing.
So those first two days in August are actually workshop days, or are they chopping their saws and greasing their tractors and so forth?
I think day one, so, day one is definitely a workshop day, there is some individual class time, but there's definitely workshop components in both of those days. Day two, all of the pre-K, K, four, nine are teaching for half a day, so they're, they're working, the other grade levels.
You say day two, you're not talking about the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh of August?
I'm talking about twenty-seventh, day two, we're teaching school to four grade levels, pre-K, K, four and nine. That's day a hundred and seventy-five and a half. See the asterisk, if you look up, right, on this twenty-seventh, those kids come for a half-day on that day. That's an extra half-day, one seventy-five point five.
I, I recall when we used to do the, the school board walk, walkthrough prior to school, we did it before those workshop days, and those classrooms were not ready in many, many, you could tell the dedicated ones in a heartbeat, and you could tell the most classrooms were not ready. It was a workshop day supposedly, when they were coming in and getting paid to do what should have been done before. As I said, they were greasing their tractors and chopping their saws.
Do we have a motion, a second, if we do?
I don't know what we have. We have a no Brad motion for this calendar, and Jolene seconded for the current calendar on the table.
Do you have little questions, Brad?
Which includes eleven pinks.
Just, that was, I, I made the motion so it could get on the table, I think we should look at amending it.
Ending it or reducing it?
Well, that would be the same with the, amending, amending it would be.
Oh, amending it, I thought you said ending.
No, no, amending, I'm sorry.
All I'm hearing on the, the table is conversation, which is fine, is the number of pinks. So eleven is the current number. And then I would just ask for discretion, working with the, the team, if you're making this up, but say you say we only want nine, I would take it back to the D L T and pick which nine sooner than later, because we have to get it to Freiburg and Lake Region, because Al, Al Smith, Freiburg, I mean, Lake Region Smith's on our behalf as a voc center, make sure we're matching enough days. So it kinda, I have to put it, it kinda needs to be done tonight. So either way, however many pinks you want, this is the teacher slash D L team, team's best presentation to you. If you'd like to change it, that's your prerogative.
Well, Freiburg does it every Wednesday, there's no coordination with this one anyway, is there?
No, that's what, no, but I, the date, like, I have to submit this, the dates, the greens, the workshops. I don't care what days become pink or not pink, that doesn't matter to me. Just tell me I want nine pinks, go, make nine pinks, or four pinks, or zero pinks, or twenty-eight pinks. Whatever you want for pinks is fine.
Where are we going with this?
Amy? Can we maybe have like a presentation? Can we approve it for this year and then have, get some more feedback, tell us what we're doing on these days to amend it for next year?
How could we table it and take it up to the next meeting?
So I think it needs to be into Al, I told Al we would have it at this meeting. I think he has to submit to D O E sooner than later. I don't know if it needs the pinks on it to Al, I think we just care about matching days.
You want to compromise and take out two?
I, I just concern about those hours counting. Then we might have to add another teacher's workshop in if we start taking those out. I feel like those hours probably count towards something.
Yeah, I think we had, it shouldn't be an on-the-limbed thing. I think, it's a good discussion to have, but I think we need more information to change it.
Which, which I mean.
And I would be fine on hearing the whole spiel about it, and we put it on our tickler for our calendar next week.
Does the calendar have to be the D O E or a certain day?
I'm reading.
But it doesn't need to have those half-days on it?
The pinks are material, like, wait, like I said, if you want eight, or two, or twenty, or zero, or a hundred, I, that hundred would be stupid, obviously, but whatever you want is fine with me on the pinks. Regional school calendars, I do, it looks like to me by June one, so I do think it would be okay to maybe hear from Suzanne on the May one meeting. I don't know if you want to approve the calendar outside of pinks, or if there's a way to write that. I'd love to get the days locked in, if that's possible, and then we can pick the number of pinks, or if you're ready to go tonight. But she would really be the best, I'm not trying, she's great, she does the work of it, she works really hard at it, so I think she'd be the best one to present to you.
Is that okay with everyone, that we do that? Say it again, Maggie?
Cal, would you think you could? I've heard more than one teacher say they'd rather teach all day than send kids home. And I'm not talking about workshop, where you have a speaker come in and introduce something.
You mean the pinks?
Yeah, if you're calling them pinks, I could.
Yeah, the half, the.
Half-days.
The pinks, yeah, the half.
Used to be grade level, it used to be grade level, that's what they called them. If she could just put a survey out, ask the teachers.
Yeah, Sue would be well prepared for me one.
When I was teaching, I'd rather have kept those kids than, and that, and that's what we did, actually, we had pinks after school. And it come before.
Danny?
Is the intention to submit the calendar for what day school's in session?
Yes, so we have to match days with those two school units. So like I said, the pinks are let, I think, our team put a lot of work to give you their best calendar. So if you want to change the pinks, that's totally fine, but they thought this was the best balance of instruction, planning their curriculum, working on what they need to work on. It's fine if that's not what this board thinks, it's ultimately your priority to adopt the calendar. What I asked for tonight is the days. Oh, and a big thing that I thought was gonna come up that hasn't come up at all, eighty-two percent of our seniors want Friday night, June sixth, and seventeen point nine percent want Sunday. So on this calendar, you'll see June sixth graduation, Friday night, six P M, one kid didn't vote, was on vacation.
What are you, what are you graduation on, Sam?
This was for, this is for twenty-five, I'm a year ahead this time, Maggie, I'm not gonna, we gotta, this is next year's, current juniors.
Missy, go ahead.
Brad, first.
I'd like to suggest that we adopt this calendar without the pinks, and we can have that discussion. So that you can, so that you can send it into the.
To, so the days are locked, then we have a regional calendar, and I'll tell them, pinks are T B D, and after the May meeting, May one, when you hear more, we can decide how many pinks that we're gonna have. That's fine by me.
I think that's a good way to go at it.
I hope the people watching know what a pink is.
Pinks are.
I know, I can do this.
Mr. Stevens, you got me on, you got me on TV?
Half-days.
It's on the website.
Early, early releases.
Yeah, it's the, we code on the color calendar, the early release days are typically Fridays, where released students at noon time, teachers do professional development from noon time on, there's eleven such, we call it, I call them pink days, but they're really early release days, but we code them in the color pink. You see it okay, Mr. Stevenson, are we doing all right?
Pretty close.
I don't really need a close-up of me, but there you go. There's a, there it is.
I'm just wondering, when, who helps develop this calendar, we began with, you talked about the team that works on it.
Team of administrators, teachers, called the District Learning Team, so all of our administrators and several teacher leaders.
Brad, just go.
Sorry, sweeping.
I think Brad made a motion.
Yep.
I have a Brad motion, Jolene second, to approve the calendar. I would modify to approve the calendar pending early release days. Is that fine and acceptable?
Discussion of early release.
Pending discussion.
Of early release days.
Of further discussion.
Yeah.
Of early release days.
And that'll be at the May meeting.
At May, well, I won't put that in this, but yes, May one.
Yeah.
Yes, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yes, so, so we have an amended motion, and we do have the second, the person agrees.
Brad, Jolene, yes, I have it.
All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. It is approved. Consideration, ready?
Yeah, I'm ready for it.
Consideration to authorize the superintendent pursuit to one, four, eight, five, section four of the main revised statute to transfer money between budget cost central lines in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. And this is something we do every year.
We do.
Jolene?
Jolene?
Second.
Missy?
All those in favor?
Thank you. I am. Mr. Stevenson, I'll get a beautiful close-up of it, I'm certain. If I get it on the screen, it'll be a miracle.
There was some work there.
I think this will be a few minutes, if you'd like to sit, that would be.
Stop this, you're giving the thirty seconds.
This is, I'll go, I will crank it out, but just for, for folks watching. Phew, all right. Tell everyone I get this on. Mr. Stevenson, you see it okay?
All good.
Do you have anyone? Brad, Joe? All right, way from start. Can you still see it, Mr. Stevenson?
Yep.
It's coming in clear. Okay, so first off, I'd just like to thank the school board and our administrative team, put a lot of time and effort into it. Our school board has seen this numerous times, had lots of thoughtful discussion in concept, R B, just, just for folks watching, I know our board knows this, they've seen this presentation in full with our administrative team, our select boards have seen this presentation in full. I thought they were very gracious and kind about what's being presented here. I know we've been here a little while, real quick, but just for the viewing public. In terms of our performance as a school system, Saukabee Valley Elementary School, they rank schools, so U S News and World Report may be familiar, ranks colleges, liberal arts colleges, and national universities, they rank schools. Be careful with ratings, I remember. I remember during school closure, one of our schools was a D, one was a B. The next year, they flipped around. I don't know the exact particulars, I know it's partially based on test scores, how they did this. But our elementary school, as you can see, just about in the top quarter of the 219 schools. It's good for SAD 6, a couple of their schools did very well. Our, we outperformed Sabeg Elementary School, a SAD 6 Elementary School, couple SAD 61s and 72 school. Uh, with the resources we have, just want to thank our staff and our families for the time and effort they put in. I thought that was a pretty strong rating for us. You might say, why is the middle school on this? Because 4 and 5 counts as elementary. Our 4th and 5th graders at our middle school really rocked it out, about the top 10% of performers across the state. So the taxpayers' board gave their money's worth with the work that we're doing as a school system. I certainly think so. Next slide. At the middle school, Sauk Valley Middle School, 121 schools were rated. Our 6 through 8 component of the middle school is also in the top half, and outperformed all of our geographic neighbors, 72, 57, 6, and 61. Education's not a competition, but just as a frame of reference, our middle school was the top performer of all of our neighbors. High school, Sauk Valley High School, 111 schools ranked. We're in the bottom of 60 to 111. U.S. News &amp; World Report didn't call out people, you're 110, you're 117, they just put you in the, the bottom half. But we're, we're thinking, as we analyze it, if you notice, our school isn't noted as earning less than 25 points. These other schools are noted as earning less than 25 points. We believe that that means that we outperformed Massapese, like Regent, Bonneville, and even Wyndham High School, which if you've driven through Wyndham, has a far greater socioeconomic base than Sauk Valley. So I think pretty great performance from our school system. Uh, with the taxpayer dollars, we try not to waste them, do a great job with the kids here. So thank you for what you give us. Tonight's budget presentation, so the only difference for our school board, you saw a draft one. Uh, you maybe saw a previous one before that as well. This is the budget presentation. Our board, after cameras are off, will be signing warrants to post in the towns. I'll go through the 11 articles and talk about the tax increase, and take any questions, then we'll take some votes. Salary benefit increase, a couple major things driving our budget this year. I think we don't pay competitively well compared to our geographic neighbors. I think it's been a goal of this board, our select boards, and everyone, to get our folks up to snuff. We have to be competitive, try and get some quality folks to work for us. That's a cost driver, and we have ESSER grant funding, where we fund positions, and other things that's coming to an end September 30th, 2024, also going to be a cost driver. You'll see that across every slide, as well as PFML, paid family medical leave, effective January 1, 2025. Uh, there's a new law around paid family medical leave, that employer tax, payroll tax, will have to pay a half a percent, which for us is a significant sum on a pretty large payroll. Additional teacher for grade 7, so we have a class of 58 moving on, 83 coming in. Certainly, the additional 25 students warrants an additional teacher, you'll see that as one of your votes. Additional teacher for grade 3, we had talked about that this year, we've made that move. Sort of already done, but we'll make it official this evening, 94 students. Certainly, five teachers, 19 per grade 3, seems like a good number. Pre-K previously supported that with grant funding, we'll take that on. Uh, we're seeing kids coming with greater challenges to our school system. Feel like it is providing some benefit to our elementary school, having that additional classroom. Standard learning opportunity teacher, we'd like to keep that program in place. Originally thought we, grant was going to end, it is not ending. We get to pay about 60% of it this year with grant funding. Uh, we'll also eliminate JMG, while eliminating a program is challenging, the numbers didn't justify it. We'll use some of the JMG money, a couple of the grant money, to fund ELO one more time. We can talk about that the next year, but for 24, 25, we'd like to keep ELO. STEM ed tech, you might have seen, Maggie Nelson did little cars, our first graders are doing. Uh, science, technology, engineering, math, big push. Uh, feel like we've gotten a lot of mileage out of that STEM program, we'd like to keep that for education of our elementary students. Pretty big increase here, 548,000, uh, those are the factors driving the increase. Oh, I gotta push my own slide, Sudan is not sitting there, it's waiting for Sudan to click it. All right, that's all right, Sue, if you're watching, I, I got it, Sue, I'm on it. Article 2 is always one that, that we worry about, special education. I'm not going to mention this every time, you'll see this. Additional ed tech position, I think that, that speaks to, we've got a massive increase in special education students over the years. I think 10 years ago, it was 15, 17% of our population, it's up to, you know, mid twenties of our population of students coming with higher needs. Uh, it's a policy we worry about, additional ed tech position to support that. A teacher that was grant funded, that I think will be able to continue to grant fund and lose partially, trying to take that burden off the taxpayers, we certainly need the position. And to help defray taxes for our local folks, we've lived without a social worker all year. We posted that ad, we haven't had an applicant for social work, uh, so we will not fill that position. There's no one to pink slip, per se, but the position will go away as a tax-saving measure. Uh, Article 3 is my favorite, vocational services, zero costs. Article 4, those are the two most challenging, and from here, we can go a little quicker. After-school program that we had in place, that the board had some great questions about. Last time, is March 20th, we will eliminate that programming. Obviously, uh, any program that we provide is, is great, but in balancing the needs of the taxpayers with the needs of the kids, we'll eliminate that programming. Student-staff support, we combined our technology assistant at our elementary school with payroll clerk as a cost-saving measure. MLTI device purchase, along with ESSER funding, will fully fund grade level. And so we'll need no new technology purchases other than MLTI, minimizing the increase in this article. Article 6, system administration, not a lot to talk about, except combining technology assistant and payroll clerk. Article 7, the big one here, uh, thank you for the board's support of this. Our dean of students slash assistant principal of the elementary, probably dean of students, to be frank. Uh, it's our biggest school population-wise, I feel like the time has come to support that with a second administrative position. So that drives a significant portion of the $124,000 increase. Transportation, this is almost entirely Ledgmere contract increase. Uh, negotiated bus contract, up 40,000, 45. Salary and benefit increases here, continuing facility maintenance. Again, I think we're all super proud of the work we do with our schools, I think we have great facilities. Very proud of the buildings and, and spaces that we educate our kids. We had some ESSER funding, we've made some adjustments to try and keep this increase to a minimum. Debt service, this is, gets paid for entirely, uh, the state bond by the DOE. Locally funded, that's our high school elevator project, we'll make our last payment in November. So we are down this much, but not the full 132, that's a state pass-through amount. But our debt service is coming to an end, we're thankful of that. Food service has done a wonderful job, uh, with the reimbursement model, the state's paying for food for all of our children. Because of that, last year, we stopped transferring 35,000 for our taxpayers to make it whole. This year, above and beyond that 35,000, we'll fund all of our positions out of it, as long as we can, to not put any food service burden on our taxpayers. Great work to our food service team, so another savings there. This slide's sometimes a waste, those are all the numbers that I just showed you added up, that your school board will sign off tonight to post in our towns. How will we pay for the 16.82 $1 million? State subsidy did increase, uh, if you check it, it looks like, I think, 317 or something like that. It's really 376, because the bond part, uh, is a wash. SAC and main care, we'll do increased billing to take some of the burden off our taxpayers. I think that's up to 85,000 this past year. SAC and tech, so those are state-initiated clients, we get fully reimbursed. My first or second year, we didn't put it in the budget, we kept getting the revenue, we didn't have the expense built in. We've done it every year since, it's never happened again. But we put that in, we would get those fully funded, it's been a waste, but we have it there in case. Out-of-district placements, that's new for us, uh, we'll fund that, 100,000, again, take burden off our local taxpayers. Uh, we are constantly worried about out-of-district placements, significant cost, about 50,000 more, plus a ride for any child that goes out of district. Contingencies, we've done this every year, we haven't, thank goodness, had to use that money. We use our fund balance in case, we have the money there, goes back to fund balance, goes back in case. We haven't spent that 350 in 11 years, or how long we've been doing it. Capital projects, so that's the things we do around facilities, one-time costs, we upped the amount to 125, that's 25,000 more. Again, to reduce the burden for our taxpayers. MLTI, I mentioned, we're buying new computers, that'll be on DOE and ESSER funding. Revolving renovation, that's our curtain walls at our high school, that was a million dollars. We had 473,000 forgiven, uh, that was great, a Sue and Lanson and construction team a while back. 52 7s, all interest-free, we only have two more payments of that, we'll do it out of fund balance. Fund balance for our elevator project, I mentioned on Article 10, uh, last payment for our elevator. Vans and private transportation, we did buy a new van this year. Uh, we have another one, uh, that is not going super great. Uh, so we'll continue to be on the market for a van, but that would come out of fund balance. Two SROs, we've had one all year, I know our board supports two, keep our kids safe. Uh, the chief has said they don't have enough officers on the road. So I don't know that we're getting another SRO, but it's budgeted for. He's great, he's trying to find one, but he's been trying to find one all year. So I don't know that we'll get two, but we've budgeted for two. Other revenue, that's from sharing staff with Freiburg. Fund balance, we've never done this, but we realize our taxpayers can only take on so much. Uh, so we use some fund balance offset to defray tax increase. What taxpayers gave us last year is 8.085, thank you so much. And the increase this year, which is the slide most folks care about, 271. And the 271, if we were all one school district, uh, would amount to 28 cents on the mill, or $28 on a $100,000 home, that's the amount of the increase divided by the total mills in our towns. How is it determined town by town? I explain this every year, because I never understood it. So if you can look at this, this has nothing to do with our school board or me. Main revenue service changes the valuation of towns. Uh, over the years, you can see 174, 191 million dollars increase in our towns. Baldwin only went up 6.1, Porter went up 11.4. Because of the changes in valuations, we don't all share in the 3.36. You can tell right now, Porter is going to have to eat most of the increase, because they went up the most, and Baldwin will have to pay the least. Hiram's right at the midpoint, so they'll probably be right around 3.3. That's as simple as it is, it's based on town valuation, who gets hit with the most of the 3.3 increase. And you'll see, I'll look like a magician on this slide. Baldwin went up the least, because their town valuation went up the least. They're only paying $2 on a $100,000 home extra. Porter's the worst, because their town valuation went up the most, at 5.07, $42 on a $100,000 home. And Hiram's just about average, at the 3.3, $28 on a $100,000 home. That's the slide folks usually care about. Uh, again, I want to thank Peggy, Becky, Sue, our whole team that puts the budget together, our board for their support, our administrative team for their thoughts and input. Uh, I think we've done a great job as a community, as a school board, as a select board, putting together great budgets that provide quality education. Thank you all so much. That's it. And now, it'll be, for, as we get ready, just some votes to formalize some of the things that we just spoke about. Number three, I just reviewed it, so four.
All right, number four on the agenda. Consideration pursuant to 20 AMR SA Section 13201, to eliminate the full-time position of social worker due to changes in the local conditions.
Jolene Bradley.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Number five, consideration to add a full-time position of grade 7 teacher for the 24, 25 school year due to changes in local conditions pursuant to 20 AMR SA Section 13201.
Bradley, Dawn.
Any discussion? All of those in favor? Number six, consideration to add a full-time position of grade 3 teacher for the 24, 25 school year due to changes in local conditions pursuant to 20 AMR SA Section 13201.
Second.
Jolene Bradley.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Section eight, consideration to add a full-time position of dean of students at Sauk Valley Elementary School for the 24, 25 school year due to changes in local conditions pursuant to 20 AMR SA Section 13201.
Jolene?
Maggie?
Do we have a second before Maggie? Bradley, thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Maggie.
Now, I noticed up there you call him a dean of students slash-
Assistant principal, so we should probably do slash, thank you for the edit. Full-time, we're gonna start with dean of students, see how good, dean of students slash, great catch, Maggie, dogs. Please, if we could, then, uh, move to add a full-time position of dean of students, most likely, slash assistant principal. Dean of students will be our first choice, watching board, et cetera.
Question?
Yes, sir.
We just passed a budget, where, where, was this in that budget?
Yes.
All those in favor? Consideration to approve the 2024, 2025 school budget.
Jolene Dawn.
All those in favor? And consideration to approve the motion below as written.
A second, I'm, I'm, I move that we do that as written.
Brad as written, Dawn as written, seconded.
Okay, so we've had a chance to look at that.
Before I go, for folks watching, this is the vote that the board is taking to allow us to, uh, call the budget meeting on April 29th. The board will sign warrants for that later at the end of this meeting. Call the budget validation referendum on May 14th, that'll be from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, uh, in the polls. And allow that the notice amounts be signed, the notice of whatever amounts were proven, it'd be April 29th, the clerks can post those in the local bond places. That's what this vote is, that the board's working on.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Consideration to approve a grade 7 science teacher.
Bradley, Jolene, and I'll go. I'd like you to approve, please, Cassandra McKeel. She'll graduate from the University of New England in May with a bachelor's degree, where she's majoring in elementary and middle education, and minoring in aquaculture, aquarium science, and marine biology.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We have a new grade 7 science teacher. Consideration to approve a grade, grade 7 and 8 ELA teacher.
Thank you, Bradley. Jolene?
No, I thought it was Missy.
Missy?
Thought I saw her.
We did it together.
Any discussion?
Uh, I mean, so wait, once Andrew Gonzalez, uh, for English, he will graduate from the University of Southern Maine in May with a bachelor's degree in English.
All those in favor? Consideration to accept nominations and elect the school board chairperson. I'm accepting nominations from the floor. I would make, uh, my first nomination, and that is, I would like to nominate Missy Jordan as school board chair.
Second.
Are there any?
Wait, do you accept?
Yeah. Sorry, I was trying to be, I would have been more, you asked like, like, three hours ago.
Any other nominations from the floor? Then nominations are closed.
Now we vote.
All those in favor of Missy Jordan as board chair, please raise your hand. Consideration to accept nominations to elect the school board vice chair, and I would also like to make that nomination, and that is for Amanda.
Why do you do that?
I'm gonna do a Capone Muccio, close.
You got my last name.
Amy. Amy.
Bradley, seconded.
All right, uh, any other nominations from the floor? Nominations are closed, all those in favor?
Wait, one sec, do you accept, Jamie?
I accept.
Yes.
Not, not Amanda, Amy.
All, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Perhaps we should have introductions.
At this time, I'd like to thank the board for my great, wonderfully three years. I've enjoyed working with all of you, and I'm looking forward to being out there under your leadership, and your leadership. Consideration to enter into executive session, discuss labor contract negotiations pursuant to 1 MR SA Section 4, 5, 6D.
Bradley?
Second.